Good evening, everyone. My name is Dennis Fisher. I'm the chairman of the Board of Supervisors for Newtown Township. I'd like to welcome you to our April 13th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. As I call the meeting to order, I'd like to, first of all, say that this is our first, our initial opportunity to livestream. So livestreaming is happening tonight for the first time. So some of there'll be people watching on their computers and cellphones, and there'll be people watching on cable TV as well as in person. So I'd like to thank everyone involved for getting that option started, and there may be more to come. Our next usual agenda item is a moment of silence, and I would ask all of, everyone on TV and on Internet and who are here present tonight to join us. There's events happening in our own community and around the world that need our contemplation and need our, need our attention. And I would just say, enumerate Ukraine, the war in Ukraine. COVID is, COVID cases are increasing again. I just did my taxes. And, and just the, this, I should mention the accident on Stuphol Road this morning. All those involved in that, and hope everyone is okay. And just recognizing that it's springtime, it's Easter time, it's Passover time, and just to contemplate all those, all those good things as well. So if you would join me in a moment of silence, join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. McGovern, is, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. No special actions? That brings us to our first round of public comment. I would just ask that if anyone has any public comment, come to the podium and state your name and where you live in Newtown. I don't see anybody heading towards the microphone, so we will move right along. Okay, thank you. Our next item of business is the DeHab Associates Incorporated consideration of, to amend the pension fund investments. And Mr. Coulson is here. Mr. Grant Coulson?
Thanks.
From DeHab Associates.
Thanks. I had to look for my tie and jacket tonight because most of the meetings that I've been to have been, you know, at my, in my living room, so to speak. Hi. Thanks for having me. So I'm one of the consultants at DeHab Associates, and we look over your investments in the three pension funds, the police, the fire, and the non-uniformed. And from time to time, we make recommendations. And I spend more time with your township manager and assistant township manager. So I'm not a total non-entity, if you will. And I'm not going to take a lot of time. I know you have plenty of things on the agenda. So I do like to hear myself talk, but forget it. It's been a very tough quarter, the first calendar quarter for all investment markets, yours included. And so-called value-style stocks have lost less than growth-style stocks, but nonetheless, everything is, everything is negative. Aberdeen is one of your managers, and they are, if you will, the most volatile because they are in more volatile markets. They own shares of Indian securities, in this case, and why I'm here, Russian securities and Chinese securities. Interestingly, the Chinese part of the emerging market index is one-third of that index. So if a manager was precluded from owning Chinese stocks, it's pretty much an endgame situation. There aren't, I don't know of any managers that don't, don't include Chinese. But I guess Aberdeen was caught with his pants down because they held three or four, I forget which, Russian securities at the time that the Ukrainian-Russian war started in February. And they hustled to, you know, try to get rid of them, or maybe they paused. You know, maybe it'll turn around. I don't know, you know, all the details that went through the portfolio manager's mind. But a time came toward the end of the quarter when they gave up, they wrote down the securities to zero value, and that's where they are now. And I'm not a lawyer, but do they really own the security if it has no value? And I don't, I don't know the answer to that. But it is in the portfolio, you know, it may have some value in the future. They can't sell it because they are not part of the Russian Federation, and any foreigner cannot participate in the Moscow Stock Exchange to buy or sell anything. So they want to sell it. And they also claim that once sold, they won't buy anymore. I don't have that in writing, but just verbally. So I understand that there's concern that anything in your valuable pension funds has any Russian taint is not necessarily a good thing, or not a good thing, forget necessarily. So we anticipated, I hope you're feeling, and we searched for alternative candidates to replace Aberdeen, who, by the way, has good historical performance, but, you know, they haven't done well recently, even aside from the Russian securities, but certainly that killed them in the first quarter. So we found two candidates that have no Russian assets. They were able to get out of them before the market was shut off to them, and they also have no plans to, to buy it. And of the two managers that I think you have, I, I recommend Putnam over, over Axiom for kind of obvious reasons. You know, they're a well-known firm, I think. The fee is very reasonable. They have better historical performance. They have high upside capture. And what I mean by that is, when the market is up, they're up more, you know, cumulatively. So I like that about them. They're not perfect. They're relatively concentrated. They have forty-some securities instead of hundreds of securities. And the years 2017 and 2020, you'll see in your documents, were really, you know, shoot, shoot the lights out years, and that tends to drive cumulative performance when you have one or two years that are really good. So they suffer from that. They have a significant China weight. It's lower than the 33% or so that's in the index, but it's real. They have it, if that's a concern of yours. And they have relatively low assets in the product I'm recommending, but, you know, it's, you know, well into, you know, a billion, but compared to some, it's, it's not, it's not large. But my first choice, assuming you don't want to retain Aberdeen, is to transfer the assets to Putnam, recognizing that they have Chinese exposure. My second choice, maybe it's more interesting, it may not be better, is why go through this stuff again? There may be something with China that comes up, you know, next week or next year, or India or Sri Lanka or whatever. And if you have a legitimate concern, you know, that would be an issue. The emerging market exposure that you have is very small. I have a copy of the investment policy statement, which is dated, but I still think good, and there's nothing in there that says anything about a requirement for emerging markets. There is for, for international stocks, but international stocks can be, you know, humongous names, and they don't have to be emerging markets. So you have a, a company by the name of Transamerica, and you have exposure there in your mainstream international stocks, not emerging market stocks. And as it turns out, they have a five-star rating. I wouldn't have said it if they didn't have the five-star rating. I was pleased. And, and they've done well. They've done well. Maybe not, you know, like in the last quarter or six months, but, but they've done well. So the, the second recommendation is to eliminate emerging markets altogether, to put half of the proceeds, now we're getting into small dollars relatively, but that's okay, that's my recommendation, half of the proceeds reinvest into the firm you have, Transamerica. It'll still be international. And the other half, put in bonds. Bonds haven't done that well at all, but I think they do kind of balance the portfolio. And why am I, you know, nickeling and diming here? Because the markets as a whole are very volatile, and you have, you know, 75%, even after all the negativity, you have 75% in equities, and this would reduce it by just enough to be meaningful. You know, maybe you'd go down to 72 or 73%. And if that's too complex, I don't mean it as an insult whatsoever, but if that is a recommendation that, you know, is not, you know, doesn't make sense to you, that, that's fine. That's my second recommendation. And I guess, I, I prefer that one over, over the, over the Putnam one. So now, you can say, well, okay, we agree to end the relationship with Aberdeen, but Grant, we want to do something else with the money. We have big withdrawals coming up or something, you know, that I don't, I'm not aware of. And you could put the money in cash pending those withdrawals or anything like that. But in terms of more permanent, that's my recommendation. Exit Aberdeen, put half of the proceeds into Transamerica, put the other half in bonds. Now, if you look, when you get the first quarter report, I, I don't have it available, but bonds haven't done well either. But I'm convinced that bonds are only going to go down so much, and they only go up so much. It's not like stocks, they're not nearly as volatile stocks. And when inflation tamps down, I think you'll get a positive return. So you would be investing money in a bond fund, PIMCO, they're kind of internationally known, that has a negative first-quarter return, but, and that's not good, but that's, that's the case with all bonds in the first quarter. I just don't think they're going to go down further. You know, the, the pundits say that maybe inflation has peaked, and if it, if it has, even if it only starts to go down a little bit, you'll start to see bonds earning a positive return. So that's why I'm recommending half of it in bonds. And I'll take your questions or criticisms or whatever.
Well, my question, I think you answered. What was, do we have to be in, in emerging market funds?
No.
We don't have to be?
No, you don't, you don't. And independent of the investment policy statement, you don't anyway. I mean, they've really, you know, woefully underperformed. You could say, well, now's the time for them to perform. I may come back to you and say, you know, a year from now, you know, it's time to reconsider or something.
And that's what we do. So, I mean, I like the idea of the 50% Trans-American, 50% bonds. If we are that high in equities, that's good. I don't pretend to understand it all. I'm a social worker by training, so.
You're, you're going to keep, you're going to keep half the money in international stocks, just bigger ones that don't have the Russian issue.
Right.
Or, or anything close, yeah. And I also am recommending that you kind of tick down your exposure to equities altogether, just by, you know, two and a half percent or something. Okay. And you're still within the guidelines of the policy. You can be down to 60% in equities, you know, at, at the low.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion of what, what Grant has suggested, the 50-50 split, to be our investments until we reallocate it, probably during reorganization, I believe.
Okay. So the idea, the first idea is you have to get rid of...
Wait, wait, hold, hold on. We have a motion. Before we have discussion, we need a second.
But 50-50 of what? He has to sell Aberdeen stock?
Well, he said, he said, take the recommendation that Grant has made.
So the complete motion is to liquidate, sell the Aberdeen stock, put 50-50, as he, as you suggested.
Half, half in your, your pre-existing international fund, which I think is, you know, a good fund, and half in bonds, which right now aren't doing well, but I think will. And bonds, virtually always, bonds in a pension fund are there to reduce risk, even though if, when you see the first quarter for PIMCO, you're going to say, what was he smoking?
So this is a point of order, Mr. Clavro?
That, that's my motion.
That's your motion?
Yes.
And would, would that, would your addition constitute a second?
Yes.
Okay, so a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
I'll, I'll talk to the township manager then tomorrow if he's available.
Hold on, Grant, Grant. Let's, let's vote on it first. It's not done yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Clavro, I see your... Were you going to comment?
Oh, no, I was just wanting Grant to stop talking because he's going to talk himself out of the air.
I, I, I didn't, I didn't hear him. Is that good or bad?
Any comments from the public?
Okay.
Seeing none, I'll call the questions. Those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
That was, that was an aye, that was an aye as well, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And I also stand with Ukraine.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm voting for this.
I believe we, pretty much all are, but, thank you, sir. You like, you like visual aids and...
I spent $24 on it.
Okay.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Do we have any stock in Apple?
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do. Yeah. I mean, maybe not at a given moment, but, and I'm ignorant whether you do now, but I strongly suspect you do, in the U.S. portfolio, U.S. mutual fund.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Coulson while we have him here? I'd like to thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your research.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No minor approvals. We have reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Ms. Driscoll is in the house and coming to the microphone.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Newtown Township Planning Commission, here to give you a report on our April 5th meeting. I know you all have hard copies of my report. I did add a little verbiage, which I thought was important. Our former chair has added verbiage in the past for the benefit of the Board of Supervisors to stay advised. On our agenda, we had Provo Pinegood LLC, Wawa Preliminary Area's Final Plan. Wawa's representatives, including their attorney, engineer, traffic engineer, and Provo president, were in attendance to review the revised plans for the land development of the 4.9-acre parcel at Lower Silver Lake Road and the Newtown bypass in the OR Office Research District for a 5,585-square-foot fueling station/convenience store use E30. The applicant has been granted a special exception for this use by our zoning hearing board. We discussed all the review later, letters of our engineer, planner, and traffic engineer, most of the points where we'll comply. The commission had some concerns about lighting and materials for the building, which the applicant has agreed to work on with our planner to satisfy. The members also had some serious concerns about the method used for traffic counts, as the counts used pre-COVID numbers, which we felt may no longer be accurate as rush, rush hour traffic has changed somewhat, but traffic rate of the day has also changed because of the increase in employees working from home. The applicant is seeking a waiver to allow parking closer than 20 feet from the building wall. Wawa does not use curbing, but does have bollards to keep the sidewalk clear, so the members did not object to requesting, granting this request. We discussed an easement for a roadway to access the adjacent landlocked parcel. While it would be the property owner's obligation to satisfy a future board to develop that parcel, we still had some concerns about the long-term traffic impact. A number of residents were in attendance to voice their concerns about allowing a bright-lit business on the bypass, destroying the rural greenway feel of the road. A number of residents of Holland were also in attendance, primarily objecting to Wawa's business model, which is forcing change to rural, rural and residential areas. Some had concerns about the environmental impact of the business being a magnet for loitering. We asked, some of the members asked to review the lighting and landscape plans. The applicant did not have the necessary visuals for us to review. We also requested to review the Bucks County Planning Commission review. The applicant stated they did not feel that to be necessary, as the Bucks County Planning Commission is only a recommendation. They stated they didn't receive review letters from our professionals on the Bucks County Planning Commission report. Our professionals do not do reviews on Bucks County Planning Commission recommendations. We never have. Some members felt Provo was unprepared, and for Preliminary Area's final land development, they did not address all the concerns of the Planning Commission. The members were polled, and six of the, and of the six members in attendance, three supported the plan, noting that it has complied with our E30 ordinance, and three opposed, as the traffic study has not used current data and the impact on the flow of traffic will affect not just the bypass but surrounding roadways, as commuters seek to avoid any backups. All of the members had concerns about allowing a bright-lit, busy business on the bypass. Because our polling showed a tied vote, the recommendation is to deny approval. Because of the late hour, consideration of the wireless ordinance was tabled to our April 19th planning, and our planner will be in attendance for that meeting. I would also like, since we did not get a chance to review the Bucks County Planning Commission report, I'd like to give the supervisors a rundown of the comments from the Bucks, Bucks County Planning Commission, because the E30 use does require compliance with our zoning ordinance. The first recommendation they made was they recommended the location of the store and the fuel pumps be flipped, so that the store is situated closer to the bypass. The grade of the site is eight feet higher than the bypass, so as proposed, the canopy will loom high above the roadway. And they also noted the canopy could be positioned with the shorter end toward the bypass to minimize the visual impact. Second, on the building and canopy designed per our ordinance, the architectural design requirements for the convenience store and full fuel pump canopy to ensure consistency with the historical character of the community. The applicant should provide architectural drawings of the proposed structures to help ensure that the style and design of the building, the roof and the facade are representative of the community character of the Newtown area. Per our ordinance, there's an adjacent residence that zoning ordinance states that the lot or property on which a motor vehicle convenience store use is proposed shall not abut a lot of property that contains a residential use. An aerial photograph of the site indicates the possibility, one or more residents located on the church property. The canopy roof, per our ordinance, the zoning ordinance requires that canopies constructed over pump islands have peaked roofs or roofs designed that's not appear as one plane. Information on their data table indicates the proposed canopy type is sloped, it's not an A-frame or a peaked roof design. They noted that the standard Wawa slant roof canopy is not consistent with the character of the area, but rather more typical of highway-oriented strip developments. The plan should be revised to comply with this ordinance. The canopy size per our ordinance sets a maximum permitted size of canopies of 3,000 square feet with a maximum length of 60 feet, but indicates that larger canopy or isn't dimensions may be allowed in the OR district if approved by the Board of Supervisors. The proposed canopy is 5,300 square feet in size with dimensions of approximately 55 by 96 feet. The supervisor should determine if the size of the canopy is acceptable as proposed. The canopy height per our ordinance states that the maximum height of the canopy shall be 22 feet as measured from the grade to the highest point of the roof. The canopy should clearly, the plan should clearly indicate the height of the proposed canopy so that the compliance with the height requirement can be determined. The canopy lighting and signage per our ordinance contains requirements for canopy lighting and signage. The plan should be revised to indicate compliance with each of these ordinance. The buffering and screening per our ordinance states that the softening of the buffers and knee walls should be included if deemed appropriate by the supervisors at the time. And there, I don't want to keep, keep going on, but we do have the pedestrian safety, lighting, the parking lot screening, the street trees, the berm. There were many items in this report from the Bucks County Planning Commission that the applicant did not address. And the E30 use requires compliance with our zoning ordinances. And that's my report.
Do we have access to, I'm sure we do have access to the Bucks County Planning Commission?
Yes, yes.
So every, everything, I think, I think their report started with the E30 flipping and, or rotating the building?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yes, it did, to soften the look. I mean, as, as proposed right now, you know, the lighting would be on the front, I think, in keeping with the character of Newtown. It's, it's a better look.
Okay. You willing to entertain some questions?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Mack?
Yes, I, I know we discussed before the rotation of the plan. I think Mr. Calabro brought that up a long time ago when they had the sketch plan before us, when they first came here. The, the term abutment, I've been notified by some people in real estate, may not apply because of the roadway in between the property you've mentioned and this site, which means it doesn't actually abut. However, in our E30 ordinance, right after that, it states that if there is a private residence within 750 feet, it doesn't say abut, it says within 750 feet, the Board of Supervisors have the option to limit the hours, determine the hours of operation. Now, I'm not quite sure when Wawa came there, but I was under the impression they were talking about a 24/7 operation. I may be wrong, but that would need to be qualified, qualified as well.
Absolutely. I mean, to be very honest, it was a very long meeting. We had a lot of public comment, and I don't believe that the hours were discussed.
That would be part of their, their land development plan?
Yes.
So we'd have to look that up if we, I don't, I was at the meeting too, and I don't remember it being discussed either.
It's certainly something we can look into.
I think the biggest takeaway for us was that the, they need to comply with the, with our ordinances in the, the E30 use. And by not even addressing the Bucks County Planning Commission letter, I mean, this wasn't even brought up at the meeting.
Also, there was nothing addressed as far as the environmental impact statement as well. And I, for one, would like to hear a lot more about that and hear a discussion about that. Also, their plans for the trees and everything that they're planning on putting in there, a lot of it is non-native, so there's a number of issues that we're finding. And I'm sure as we get further along in the process, we'll find out more.
Correct. They said a lot, a lot of the plans that they suggested would not be adaptable, and also the, the buffering on the bypass, they had them as a straight line, and Bucks County Planning Commission suggested staggering to, to give it a, soften the look a little bit.
Also, they had sod being used there instead of something that would help the watershed. The sod, everything goes straight through sod, right down into the watershed. So right there, that's a terrible use. Just some issues there.
Yeah, I believe they're all valid issues, but these are things that we could take up under land development, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Well, that's what this was, Preliminary Area's Final.
Okay. A few questions on the meeting itself. You did have a quorum, correct?
We had six members, yes.
Okay. I don't, I don't see any names of who attended the meeting, who was there, who wasn't there. It usually is on the minutes, but apparently this is called a synopsis. I don't know if there's a difference.
Uh huh.
Okay. These were not kept by, by attending secretary or?
No, we don't usually name who by-
Yeah, I, I think you do. I could pull prior minutes just, just to see that. But that's not the, the issue here.
I can give you the names of the members.
Okay, wait, hold on. I could see it was a three to three tie. Now, to me, a three to three tie is a stalemate. What gave you the determining factor that it should be denied? I think that's, that's uncalled for because it was not voted to be denied or passed. It was voted equally among, among the, the members, three to three, but I don't know if as Chair, you determined that a declination was in proper order, and I'd like to know why.
According to our solicitor, a three-three vote is de facto denial.
No, it's, it's a denial of the whole vote itself. It's not a denial of that motion. So you saying it's been denied, I think is incorrect. I think the motion never went through, if you had a motion.
We did have a motion and we took a vote on it.
So three to three would be, again, a stalemate. Doesn't mean it was denied or approved. It just means that that particular motion was not passed.
I'm not an attorney, Phil, but as I said, we went on the, the findings of our solicitor.
Well, I, I just find that a tie and, and somebody determining that tie meant that you weren't going to recommend it to us. I, I don't know, it seems to kind of slant it one way or the other. Also, is the bypass considered a, a highway? I don't know. Can somebody tell me that? Is it considered a highway? Mr. Solicitor, do you know?
I don't know offhand, Mr. Calabro, whether the bypass is considered a highway or a major arterial road or some other classification of road in the, in the Saldo.
Either way, it's not a local, a local road.
No, it is a state road. It is a state road because-
But is it a high, is it considered a highway?
I know it's considered a state road, highway, I'm not sure.
Okay, because you'd mentioned that the Wawa's are allowed to build along highways. And I'm just curious, is this, the bypass considered a highway? Some of the other things that you mentioned, again, will be addressed. I guess we're, we're going to see these applicants, they're going to come before us, to answer some of the questions, was I, like I said, I think some of the questions you have are valid questions. The breakup of the people attending this meeting, how many were, came up to the podium were Newtown Township residents?
Several, and we have a-
Two, three. Mr. DeApril says two.
Okay, two.
Okay, that's not several.
I do request-
How many, how many were from out of area, say Holland?
About eight.
About eight.
Okay. So-
I did request that Newtown Township residents get up and voice their opinions first.
Apparently, they didn't feel the need to get up and address it, but the Holland people thought that they could come to our township and address our issue, of which is totally different than what their, the Wawa were, that they have. Am I correct? Theirs is going to be near a residential area, whereas ours is not near a residential area. I believe they have an existing Wawa that I'm sure maybe they shop at now, but maybe they don't want a super Wawa or whatever. That's, that's their prerogative. But for them to come and control our Planning Commission meeting just seemed to be out of hand. And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to tell anyone how to run a meeting, but the chairman should have had control of this and realized that, that this was being run over by out-of-township people.
I don't agree with it.
And that our people here that came up, only two voiced their opinion out of 15, 20,000 people that live in this township? I, 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 you know, everything up here has always mentioned transparency, but it seems like we were more transparent to outside residents than we were to our own. And I, I just find that to be appalling. I mean, you, you can run your meeting as you see fit, but if I see, if I were to see many people from another township coming, of which I don't even know how many people here are from, maybe from Holland, but I, I think they're limited as to what they can say. This is not their township.
Are you suggesting that she should have not let people speak in a meeting in public?
I'm suggesting that she should have made the statement that if you're not from this township, maybe you shouldn't be voicing your opinion for this town, for this township.
So you want, you wanted to censor people that are going to speak in a public meeting?
I'm not, you're not censoring, you're, you're controlling the meeting.
I know-
Kyle, I know, I know that your, your view on this, I know your view on this, and your view is against-
I hate the whole Wawa.
Is against the whole Wawa, and I know probably you never even stepped foot into a Wawa. And if there is a Wawa in Newtown Township, there'll be a sign of your face on there, and you won't be able to get in. I'm sure that's what you intend.
Now you're trying to censor me going to businesses in Newtown?
Absolutely, absolutely, especially businesses that you don't, you don't want to support.
It's a volunteer position. You're giving her hard time in an inappropriate manner. It's not worth you giving her hard time about.
Well, if, if you want to be the chairman of a particular committee, do it the right way.
Phil, you, you don't tell people to step away if they're not from Newtown Township. I get what you're saying, but I don't disagree, I disagree with the way you're saying that you should handle it.
Again, if the control of that meeting was under residents that don't live here, you know, their opinion can be valued. But again, if you're, if you're basing it on the number of residents from Holland and the number of residents from Newtown, it didn't seem like there were many residents from Newtown that came out here and complained.
And your, your point is noted, that's fine, but I don't like you criticizing how the meeting was run. That's all I'm saying.
I could criticize anything I want.
You can, and I can criticize your criticisms.
I think you're, I think, by you telling me that I can't criticize-
I'm not. I'm saying it's not a good idea.
It's basically telling me that I don't have my First Amendment rights, just like I was told once before.
That's how you're going to turn it around?
I mean, I was told once before I can't question minutes. But, I mean, I think that's my prerogative and my free speech. And I know that some people out there that are not here tonight, maybe in another state, are going to come up to the podium saying that I'm a bully, I, I'm trying to control things. No, this is called free speech, like you said. You said it.
And I agree. You should be shutting, saying it should be shut down.
Like I should not. I should be shut down?
No, that's not what I said.
Chairman, may I interject, please?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's follow the quorum, Dennis.
First of all, Dennis, can I make a couple of comments? I did have control of the meeting, Phil. I asked residents of Newtown to come up and speak first. I felt it was a courtesy to let the people from Holland come up and make short statements, which they did. And then we continued on to our reviews.
Can you tell me who voted yes and voted no?
Yeah, I'll tell you who voted yes and voted no.
Okay.
I voted no, Craig Deutsch voted no, and Terry Christiansen voted no.
And you made the decision that no was the decision.
If a motion doesn't have enough votes to pass, it fails. That's a loss. That's a fail. It's a no.
But the recommendation shouldn't be that the Board of Supervisors shouldn't approve this.
By the motion failing, that's what the de facto standard is. If it didn't pass, it means it failed. There's not a, a middle ground. It's a pass or fail for a motion.
If it failed because of a tie, there should be no recommendation.
A tie is a fail.
There should be no recommendation.
Phil, you've seen it up here, how many years have you been on the board? Almost 18 years? You know, if a motion doesn't pass for lack of votes, it fails. That's the way it is. That's-
But there's no, there's nothing to say that we were against that particular person or business or anything.
All right, all right, Phil. You know the point I'm making. We know where we are.
Yeah, I know the point, I know the point you're making.
Phil, I, I gave you the-
I know that the, the control was of a no vote, and that, that's what was given because, if it was a tie, and you were a yes vote as opposed to no vote, would you have said it was, it passed because it was a tie?
I left that to our solicitor to make that call.
Well, I'm not going to call the solicitor up here.
And I gave you the no votes.
Okay.
The yes votes were Mary Donaldson, Warren Dallas, and Shelley Howland.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And my, my way of approaching residents from out of town is I ask them to wait until the Newtown people speak, so.
And I also like to say that our, we are an advisory board.
Correct.
We review all the plans, we make recommendations. This was our recommendation.
And we, and we can still take it or not.
Understood.
The, the final decision ultimately is with the Board of Supervisors. Our job is to review and make sure that any applicant that comes in complies with our ordinances. None of these letter, Wawa did not comply with our ordinances. It's pretty simple.
Okay, and that was, that was verified by the solicitor?
Yes.
Okay.
We're all volunteers up there. We've spent a lot of time. This Wawa, we've been reviewing for five years, and-
I don't know if it's been quite that long, but it seems that long.
It's been a long time.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we want it to be right. It, it's not that I'm against Wawa. I, I, I go to Wawa's, but this is, this is a massive land development that's going to come to the bypass. It's going to make a lot of changes down there, and we want it to be right.
We still haven't determined if the bypass is a highway, but that's, that's neither here nor there. I appreciate your help. I'm just questioning it, that's all. I think, I think I have that right as a supervisor to question.
You do. I mean, I'm not going to get in a pissing match with you, but I'm just stating.
Apparently, we are. I mean, let's not, let's not, let's not, we are in a match here, so.
Maybe, maybe we can get some relief here then, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to say that Wawa was not prepared.
They were?
They came unprepared. I was a witness. I came and sat and watched, and they were totally unable to answer questions, so that says a lot right there.
You know, one thing I'd like to add is this isn't their first rodeo in Bucks County. They know that the Bucks County Planning Commission recommendations are not required to have, to be reviewed by the township engineers or the, you know, or the planners.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Driscoll? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, will there be any opportunity for public comment on this issue?
Well, um-
I don't think there was a motion.
No, there, there's no action being taken by the board. Certainly, the second round of public comment later on in the meeting will be open to that. There's nothing for the board.
My suggestion would be to hold it until the second round of public comment.
Very well, thank you.
Okay. All right, that brings us to EAC, Single Use Plastics Resolution. And Ms. Snyder would like, as, as liaison to the EAC, would you like to introduce our speakers?
I would. This is Elaine McCarron, and she's been a warrior on something that we've been working on for years. And because of COVID, we had to slow down the process because we couldn't ask businesses at that time to stop using single-use plastics or request they find an alternative. But now we have continued with that effort, and I, we have a presentation for you that in a more positive light to just explain to you how we would like to stop using as much single-use plastics in this township. With that, I give you Elaine McCarron.
Is that microphone on, Elaine?
Your mic's on.
Push that button. There you go.
I'm sorry, it's called repeat. Okay. Okay, my name's Elaine McCarron. I am the co-chair of the Environmental Advisory Council. This is Carol Walsh. She's also on the EAC, and she assisted in this project. And on behalf of the EAC, all of us, we want to present a resolution to encourage voluntary reduction of single-use plastics. Please turn to slide two. That's slide one, slide two. The purpose of this presentation today, we will review what is a single-use plastics, what is a microplastic? How are these plastics affecting our health, our animals, our marine life, and of course, pollution? It is the intent, what is the intent of our resolution? What are many alternative products that we brought? What are alternative, alternative practices? And our community participation in this. Turn to slide three. Plastics has become a very, very severe environmental issue at this time. Many of our residents and the community have absolutely no idea that plastic is made up of petrochemicals. They do not realize the connection between the tremendous amount of plastics that we use every day, all of us do, and the detrimental environmental impact it causes. and the detrimental environmental impact it causes. They have no idea that those plastic bags and throwaway plastics take 400 to 1,000 years to break down. They go into your landfills, they leach into your waterways, they leach into your oceans, leave toxic residues for many generations to come. And it is, I hope, in our best interest that we protect our environment, the air we breathe, the food we eat, our marine life, and pass a resolution to reduce our single-use plastic. But the first thing is, what is a single-use plastic? It is any plastic that is used one time and thrown away many times in a matter of seconds or minutes. Right now, we have a throwaway society that generates over 35 million tons of plastic waste yearly. And what is a single-use plastic bag? It is those carryout bags that we all get. They're less than 2.25 millimeters thick and they come from our supermarkets, our restaurants, and our retailers. Exceptions to this resolution. But no X toxic and no S wasteful are the bags for packaged produce, bulk items, frozen foods, packaged meats, fish, and bakery goods. Those throwaway plastics that we use right now, I don't know if everybody knows this, but it's 40 to 50% of all the plastics produced yearly. And most of those plastics have been produced in the last 15 years. Those other throwaway plastics include your styrofoam cups, those lids, those straws, utensils, and stirrers that we all use. Also, what everybody should know, those thin plastics bags cannot be recycled, they get caught in the machines, and they contaminate them. And even waste management, I confirmed that that is happening in our own community. Fact is, just so you know, the United States now only recycles 8 to 10%. Canada only recycles 9%. But the US is now the second largest polluter on the planet. Turn to slide four. The numbers, if you see, are staggering and they're climbing, especially in America. We throw away 100 billion single-use plastic bags. We throw away 25 billion styrofoam plastic cups, 50 billion water bottles. Slide five. When incinerated, those plastics release very toxic chemicals into the air. They cause greenhouse gases, CO2, a lot of it is methane and ethylene. 90% of that plastic ends up in our landfills and those toxic chemicals are polluting your soil. They also clog your storm drains, they get stuck on riverbanks, they accumulate in your estuaries. Slide six. From the sewers, streams, rivers, plastic flows into your waterways and into your water system right now. In those waterways, it further breaks down from those macroplastics, which are the large pieces of plastic, into microplastics. And microplastics, just so you understand, is the size of a sesame seed or less. It is 1 to 5 millimeters long. And slide seven. And if you see the picture of a fish, that's, this is exactly what happens. Our fish eat those plastics and why? It is mistaken for food and it smells good. We all know about the North Pacific garbage patch that is off the coast of California. But do you all know there is now five garbage patches around the world exactly like that? And now, 1 in 3 fish have microplastics in them. Slide eight. 60% of all our seabirds all have plastic that they're eating and it's expected to rise to 90% by 2050. Slide nine. All your turtles, all your beached whales have also a large amount of plastic in them. They also mistake it for food. Slide 10. There's plastic debris and microplastics that they eat can and absolutely kill them. They get tangled in it, they choke, they suffer physical harm and amputations. Plastic blocks our marine life digestion, they injure their organs, they interfere with reproduction. That slide is real. Even our coral reefs, there's a brand-new report that just came out. 25% of our marine life are near coral reefs. And now, 80% of our coral reefs are more likely to get diseased because of those microplastics. Now, to end, why should we care in Newtown? Right now, also, I sent you citations. Those plastics are found now in your organs. New research, peer-reviewed articles, they're now in your bloodstream. We inhale about a credit card-sized plastic every single day. And with that knowledge, we should all take note of what we're bringing home in plastic every day, what we're using in our water bottles, and what we're throwing away. Those microplastics are in your food. The higher concentration is actually in farmed fish. The cleanup costs, just so you know, for Penn Dot is in the tens of millions. But locally, just so you understand, Penn Environment, which I don't know if everybody knows who Penn Environment is, they do research locally in Pennsylvania. 53 waterways were tested in Pennsylvania and every single one of them were polluted with macro and microplastics. Bucks County alone, where we live, Neshamity Creek, Toheken Creek, and the Delaware Canal were all polluted with microplastics. Now, there's a 2021 study, it should be out very soon. I called, they didn't have it ready yet. And this will be a follow-up study to see the waterways in our air, excuse me, in our area. Turn to 11. There are resolutions and ordinances being passed throughout Pennsylvania. Right now, we're a Class II township, municipality. Doylestown just passed their resolution. Doylestown Borough is in process. Solbury passed a resolution. Westchester Norbert passed ordinances. For cities that are surrounding us, Philadelphia passed their laws, their ordinances. Bethlehem is in progress right now. Slide 12. Surrounding us, New York, New Jersey, DC, 10 states at this point, all pass ordinances. As per Penn Environment, 23 now local municipalities in Pennsylvania around us have inquired about resolutions or ordinances and to ask for guidance. I themselves asked, I asked for guidance from them. I was just in Charleston, they just passed an ordinance. Slide 13. Many of our local businesses though, we say, how is it going to affect our businesses? If you look on the table, it's amazing. All of you received in your packages that you had ahead of time. Right now, in our businesses, Solstice, Harvest, Cats and Dogs Rule, Jules Pizza, Naked Chocolate already use alternative products. Those products are made from plant-based products. They include hemp, sugarcane, wheat straw, paper, but they're all from sustainable paper, not from old-growth products. Here's World Centric, they're incredible. If you go on World Centric's site, they are absolutely an incredible company and many of our companies, restaurants are using them right now. McCaffrey's, to encourage people to not use single-use plastic, is giving a 4 cent return for using your own bags. Our town, even our township corporations right now, Gap, Dunkin' Donuts, Chick-fil-A, Rite Aid, Ulter, all have sustainability policies right in place. But the goal will be in this community, because we want to pass a resolution and it's voluntary, will they cooperate in this community? Because we're not passing, we're not going for an ordinance at this time. Even if anybody read the news just recently, Financial Times, Starbucks in our community just unveiled their corporate plans to eliminate all single-use cups and encourage reusable mugs. So even Costco, which are not in our community, they never use single-use plastics. They, you would have to buy it at the register if anybody goes there. They say that it contributes to waste and it keeps financial costs down. And that's what we want to do for our businesses, help keep financial costs down. And by using alternatives, yes, they're initially may go up, but not giving out those single-use plastics, actually, the research shows that it reduces cost. Even, I have to just say it, but even PepsiCo, Pepsi, even has now a sustainability policy. They're going to be using 100% of packaging and recyclable compostable products. So even nationally and globally, all you, the UN, all member nations is now have ordinances. They do not have single-use plastics. So slide 14. So what can we do? If we look, you see people coming out of supermarkets, that's what it looks like. Our goal in, with the EAC, and we can do this. We can educate, we can promote participation. There are many ways to do that, to use recyclable bags, reusable bags, but any bag will do. We want to promote the reduction of all plastics in the community. We can educate them on natural, and our businesses, and it has to come from the businesses. Natural alternatives that won't break down without the toxic residues that all harm our health. And boy, are they doing it now. Now, I want to say one thing, this just came out in Philadelphia. They're experimenting, which I hope if you do pass this, we can even work with our businesses. There are zero waste solutions. They're doing it in California and now in Philadelphia, they're using QR codes and they're tracking their plastics. And believe it or not, the residents are bringing back your plastic, over 90%. So when people think this is crazy, it is not crazy, they're doing it. And they've had a tremendous response from their staff. We can work with our delivery apps to not give out any plastic unless it is asked for, but also, they can use alternatives. But the key to our, all of us being successful is changing everybody's mindset. It'll take a tremendous amount of education for all of us and our businesses. And, you know, I just want to encourage alternative products. I actually bought so many alternative products. And just so you know, what some businesses not here is doing, they're trying to give out thicker plastic bags and saying, please reuse it. It's not being reused. It's being thrown away, more plastics are, and that are toxic, are going into your landfills. So I don't encourage that. But if people ask, you know, I could give them what the research is showing. Anyway, I would like to end this with bring your own bag, bring any bag to a store and help us to pass the voluntary resolution. Thank you. Any questions? None?
I, I want to thank you. This is something that we began to talk about it when I was the liaison to the EAC and Ellen was a member, or Ms. Snyder was a member. So I'm glad to see it. I guess I just wanted to stress this is voluntary. What you're proposing, and I'm guessing everybody saw the resolution in their packet. And, I mean, there are actually cost-saving ways for businesses to change over from single-use plastics.
I have one other also.
Yes.
So we have the Borough here as well. Here's two representatives from the Borough. I want to just say that they've been working with me, okay? They didn't get to, well, this is Catherine Borish, and could you introduce yourself?
Bill, I don't.
Right, that's right, Bill. And Catherine and I have met numerous times because they're interested in working together. So, and actually, this presentation was also their help.
Right. And our businesses, people use the businesses from the Borough and the.
Okay, I would like Carol to say this because Carol has been with me.
We, our, our initial quest was to visit all of the restaurants and local places to see what their policy, what they have, what their policy is. Would this be something that they would want to do? Is it impossible? Is there a corporate challenge? Everyone that we went to, every single business that we visited here in the township were enthusiastic in supporting this. And many of them, for example, Harvest and Solstice, this is the foundation of their, of their policy. They, they pride themselves in using these. So when I went and asked for samples, they were delighted to be able to give these to us. The, in, in July of 2021, the European Union, all the countries in the European Union have a ban on single-use plastics. And that's the plastic forks and knives. And Elaine and I were curious, what do they use in lieu of this? And these things are made of bamboo, they're made of other things that are biodegradable, so that it's certainly out there. And if all of these countries can do this, certainly, this is something that we can work on. The states all up and down the eastern seaboard, Connecticut, Maine, Rhode Island, they all started with communities just like this. And they started with a town and then more towns and more towns, until it eventually became a state mandate. So you're seeing this kind of flow as it, as it moves forward. And it's, it starts out voluntary, it starts out a little bit at a time, and it becomes a non-issue because it's very doable.
It becomes the, the norm rather than the exception.
Exactly, exactly. And so the companies are starting with this, they don't even, they don't even have it on hand, anything else.
I.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I just have a question in regards to Starbucks.
Oh, yeah, you talk.
Now, I know, and maybe if you don't know, that's fine, but, but I know that they hand out paper cups.
Right.
Are they, are paper cups that detrimental to the environment? Because they want to replace them with plastic reusable cups. But what if people start throwing those away?
Yeah, that's right. No, you're, you're absolutely correct. And I actually, it's interesting you brought this up. I actually tried to contact the corporate office on, on some of these same issues. First of all, none of these companies, they vow, if you look at their, we, we actually put together a spreadsheet for you, and we can share this, of, all this is Carol helped put this together, it was amazing, she did amazing research, all the sustainability policies. And what they are saying also, they will not use old-growth forests. However, you're right, paper comes with its own problems. So the best thing is use total alternative products. But that comes, you'll start noticing, if you pay attention down to commercials and everything, it's coming from the corporate side. And, and it's also coming from the chemical, our chemical companies. This just came out as well, it's brand-new. Even Dow and all these others companies are now coming together in a consortium to now have advanced recycling facilities for these, remember, you can't recycle single-use plastics or a lot of these other plastics, you just can't. They're now coming, getting wiser, there was a, I can share this article with you, but now they're even starting to build these consortiums. So you're going to see, yes, as residents, we can do this, we can do the grassroots. But you know, it really comes from corporate. Because where is it coming from? Who's making the products? But enough of us do this? I mean, it's amazing what's going on in Pennsylvania alone. But if you look at, I sent you a packet, if you look at the states and it's growing, I mean, I was just in Charleston, I, I mean, I, and somebody said to me, as I walked into a vegetarian place and they said, oh, you know, we just passed our ordinance. I said, I know. So people are excited about this. So we can do this, but your questions are absolutely valid.
Now, just, just to stay on the coffee topic.
Oh, we'll stay on the coffee.
Okay. A pet peeve of mine has always been Dunkin' Donuts. Now, there's a company that gives you, depending on the size, a paper cup, but then a styrofoam cup. Have they been mentioned in any of these studies?
Yes, yes, that's actually, that's excellent question as well. That's actually in their sustainability policies.
I'm a big coffee drinker, that's.
Well, listen, everybody, I'm tea, but everybody is. And if you, you have no idea how I actually, and I will go on this quest. I am trying to meet with representatives or speak to representatives of what really is their sustainability. And if you have those questions, write it down, tell me. And yes, that's what I'm going to do. And what I did, because I couldn't get answers in Pennsylvania, because a lot of us don't have ordinances, I went over to Philadelphia, went over to Jersey, and I went into New York. And I walked in and I said, what are you doing? And they're all proud of this, you know? So that's going to be the challenge here. I mean, let's be honest, we're going to be voluntary, like all of them started. But hopefully, over time, we'll see how it goes and, and, you know, maybe, maybe that'll change as well. But you know what? We're small potatoes, we have to start somewhere. It's all grassroots, but it's growing very. It's all grassroots, and it, but it's growing very fast.
And we'd be very proud if we would do this here in Newtown.
Yes, yes. And I, and I have to say, this is something that the two of them actually started. And as they went on the Board of Supervisors, now I'm doing their work.
And Ellen, we can get you that spreadsheet where we interviewed all the, we have the names of all the people here in town that we interviewed, and we have links to all the corporate websites that'll take you right to their sustainability policy. So, we have a very detailed spreadsheet that we could last share with you.
Thank you so much. That was very informative. Thank you.
And I didn't even have to use my bench.
I have a question about...
Do you have to leave this, Ellen, then you ran?
Maybe.
Just so you know, just so you know also, like I said, all the articles, there's a lot of citations and resolutions to anybody's, including where Carol was from.
And all that is in your packets as well, all the resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a question for Mr. Sander.
Certainly.
Did, did I see an email where it said that you have reviewed the resolution?
Yes.
And it, it fits with our template?
It does.
What we do. Then I have a question for the, the board. Do we want to take action on this, this evening?
I hope so.
Okay. Very good.
I make a motion that we pass this resolution.
There's a, Mr. Mack has offered the motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I thought you might. Ms. Snyder, thank you very much. Any other discussion on the board? Comments, questions? Any from the public?
Yes.
I see two. Mr. Christiansen. Mr. Christiansen, why don't you go first?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm Terry Christiansen. I live at sixty-seven Kirkwood Drive in Newtown. I'm, I serve on the Planning Committee and Plan Commission, and a prospective member of the Environmental Advisory Committee, named Mr. Walt Dunlap at two-two-one Willow Drive, sent me an email. He couldn't be here. He asked if I would relay his comments. I should add here that Mr. Dunlap is a forester by, or was a forester by profession. And I put my computer up here to make sure I get this correct. His comments are, "I would like to thank the committee members of E A C, and Elaine in particular, for a well-researched and accurate presentation. It clearly demonstrates the reasonable rationale for the regulation of single-use plastic at the municipal level. Single-use plastics are unnecessary to modern living and are, in fact, detrimental to it in many ways. For instance, every border is aware of the bays and ocean, that the, the bays and oceans are filling with plastic, harming all marine life to the tiniest orgasms. Our streets, roads, and our storm system drained in the Neshamoney or other creeks, which drain to the Delaware River, which flows to the ocean. It is not a long stretch to consider Newtown a direct coastal drainage community. I've been fortunate to live in Freeport, Maine, and Charleston, South Carolina, where this association is fully recognized and actively addressed by a ban on single-use plastics. Environmental stewardship is only a concept if it is not rigorously applied by practical regulation. Now, it is good to know this, know this community reaffirms its commitment to this stewardship. Please consider a ban on single-use plastics. We owe it to each other." So, this is from Walt Dunlap. There's a saying among members of the Religious Society of Friends, and that includes me. Friend Walt speaks my mind.
Thank you, Mr. Christiansen. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Steve Keely, sixty-three Office Court in Delancey Court. And my wife, Addie, and myself are here tonight to, in a way, thank the efforts of the two previous speakers for all the work that they put in on this effort. And also to point out something that I'm sure all the board members are aware of, that this effort by getting behind this in a public way is really a feather in the cap of Newtown Township. And I think all that can be done to support their work is very important, and we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Schreiber, and I live at one-oh-five Rittenhouse Circle. I also would like to thank the E A C, and Elaine, and Carol in particular, for sharing, for all their hard work and sharing the very thorough research they did on single-use plastics and the detrimental effects it has on the environment and people, the planet. I found the statistics very shocking and eye-opening. Knowing that microplastics get into our soil, water, our bodies, and can take up to a thousand years to degrade, should be a wake-up call to all of us. And as was mentioned earlier, about ten states have banned single-use plastic. Many municipalities, the entire European Union has banned single-use plastic. I think it's a good opportunity and time for our community to follow suit. And I think that will help us be part of the solution rather than adding to the problem. So, thank you.
Thank you.
John Dier from Newtown, great. This is a voluntary ordinance? Okay, good. You guys said we don't want to see it mandatory with the inflation over eight percent because all prices would go up higher. Thank you. I'd like to thank E A C for the good presentation.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of this, passing this resolution on single-use plastics? Please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, moving right along. We got the board, board comments. I have just, just a couple of things to comment on. I wanted to thank the Newtown Fire Association and the Newtown Emergency Services Department for their work on a fire that happened on State Street three weeks ago, right after a, a, a board meeting. So, due to their quick response, the, the damage was, was limited. It could have been much worse. So, that, and, and there seems to be a theme tonight for me, fire services. I attended two trainings, two fire service trainings with, with Chief Forsyth and Deputy, Deputy Liz, Deputy Chief Liz. And the, the topics were strategic planning for fire services and effective relationships for fire service companies. It really does seem that by attending this training, what I, what I really learned was that this is a, it's probably a national problem, but our presenter specified that it was a statewide problem and a county and regional problem of getting volunteer, getting, attracting and keeping volunteer firemen. So, this is something that we've been very aware of in Newtown and have been working for a couple of years to provide even better services, to maintain where the services we have and improve them. And this has brought an awareness to me that I'm going to stay with for a while, that we continue to have very valuable fire services. And then, other than that, I, I did attend the Planning Commission meeting on April fifth. And other than that, I'd like to wish folks a happy Easter, happy Passuk, and happy spring. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the April seventh Joint Zoning Council meeting and a couple of things. Where it discussed the electric vehicle charging station ordinance needs further work. The Bucks County Planning Commission, which I, I really admire the work and suggestions and comments that they make, suggested they can provide examples of such ordinances enacted by other townships. So, we'll be able to have that come up maybe at the next meeting. The other thing is the Bucks County Planning Commission has rolled out a draft of the comprehensive plan. And that has been distributed to the supervisors. At this point, it's not going to be distributed to the planning commissions until after it gets comments from the supervisors of the three different townships. And at the May fifth J Z C meeting, they will review and make a final decision if the plan is good enough to circulate. And the Bucks County Planning Commission, when it does, after it circulates to the planning commissions, will be glad to come in and make presentations and answer questions from the planning commissions. The other item that was discussed that I paid attention to, there was a couple of things I didn't pay attention to. But one was a signage ordinance. The board chair, Chester Poganowski, mentioned that he saw on Zillow a listing for a sliver of land across from the Wawa site on the Newtown bypass. I don't know if that's a highway or not. But it said, the listing said, "May become a huge cash cow for rental income from commercial billboards." However, when I looked this up on Zillow, it wasn't across from the Wawa. It was further down the bypass, near the Knack. And it was very interesting, and the members of the Joint Zoning Council thought perhaps they need to, the townships need to take a look at what their signage with regard to billboards might be and see if there is something to do, changing ordinances for that. That's my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Ms. Snyder?
I am the liaison to the Council Rock School Board. And as such, I attended and spoke at a meeting last week concerning book banning. And I just expressed my concerns about it. And I, that's the way that we educate future leaders of our community by allowing them to not be censored. And I was glad to show up and give my opinion. And I think probably a lot of us have that opinion. Other than that, we had an E A C meeting where we finalized this plan for tonight, and that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Mr. Clabro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make a couple of statements if I, if I may. Last meeting, I had said something in regards to the Council Rock School Board and their finding a new superintendent. And I did mention that it would be nice if they were to interview women and/or women of color. A, a very nice woman came up here and said that the appointment should be based on qualifications. Well, I'll be the first one to say, I was not saying that just because they're a woman or a woman of color, they shouldn't be qualified, because I think there are probably plenty of them out there. So, I, I just want to clarify that I, I'm just not making a blanket statement. I would want that person to be very qualified. And I think if you look across the nation, there are women that are heads of major city school boards. And it, it would just be a nice thing if Newtown could be, again, one of the townships ahead of the curve in, in doing so. The other thing I'd like to say is, and this may be controversial in, in what I'm going to, to mention here, but, but recently, I've been trying to give credit where credit is due in regards to local businesses helping the community. And I had mentioned the Green Parrot in the past and LaStala Market. But, but I also like to mention, and I, I know in some cases, this person is a controversial person, but Mr. Jim Worthington, for whether you like him or whether you do not like him, whether you like his politics or not, has donated five thousand dollars to what they call Fuel the Blue, which is a, which is a great program for the policemen of this area, whether it's not only Newtown Township, but I believe it goes to Lower Makefield, Upper Makefield, and so on. And I, I thought that whatever issues we may have with Mr. Worthington, this was a generous donation on his part, and it, it goes towards a good cause, which is basically helping our police officers. And, and it's not that the police officers want a free lunch. It's just a show of gratitude for all the things that they do. So, I'd just like to give a shout out to him in regards to what he just did recently for the, the policemen, not only of Newtown Township, but of the surrounding areas. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clabro. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the Park and Rec report for this evening. Registered today for the following upcoming programs: Spring Break Art Workshops, Line Dancing, Savvy Social Security Planning, and Exploring Archery. Summer is just around the corner. We have weekly summer camps for every interest, including sports, art, cooking, and STEM. There are half-day, there's a half-day playground camp director, ages twenty-one plus needed. Please visit newtownfund.com for an application. A reminder, Touch a Truck is Thursday, April fourteenth, at Veterans Park from eleven to two. And lastly, discounted movie tickets are available to purchase at the Park and Rec office. And assessing place tickets are available for pre-order at a discounted price of seventeen dollars. And that's all I have from Park and Rec. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I believe that concludes our boards and committee reports. I see we have no public hearings or land development discussions this evening. Reports of officials are engineer. Mr. Van Oto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. I do have two items to report. The first item would be the twenty-twenty-two Look at Fields Road Program. I have a letter, excuse me, recommendation. And there are two bids for this project. And the first bid was from James D. Morrissey, and the second was from Haver's Black Topping Incorporated. These bids range from three hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars. And the second bid was for, that's four hundred eighteen thousand, nine hundred forty-one dollars and fifty cents for the base bids. In particular, these base bids, they cover a number of streets here in the town. I can go over that just to give you an idea of the street coverage. I have Iris Court, Sterling Street, it's Taylor Avenue, Norwood Avenue, Millstone Drive, North Congress Street, North Chancellor Street, and then also Primo's Court. That was for the base bid. And we also have a series of alternate bids. There's about ten of those. So, we have alternate bids one through eight, and alternate bid eighteen and twenty-one. And I can also go down and mention those roads as well. So, the first one for alternate bid one was Pennwood Drive. Alternate bid number two was Colonial Drive. Alternative bid number three, that's Quaker Drive. Alternate bid number four, Centennial Avenue. Alternative bid five, Esparo Walk. Alternative bid six was Camilla Court. Alternative bid seven is Honey Locust Lane. Alternative bid number eight was Brett Leaf Place. And alternate bid eighteen was Linden Avenue. And the last was Newtown Bypass Intersection, and that's for paving markings only. Just to give you a cost of the overall bids for the project, this was in... Just to give you a cost of the overall bids for the project, this was in total $811,794.50, and this covered approximately 3.4 miles in this area. Are there any questions in terms of this recommendation here?
I had one, and it might be more for the township manager than you, unless you know.
Okay.
What was the, what was the budget that we submitted for the year for road improvements?
I don't have that information for the year with me tonight.
That's why I thought maybe the township manager...
I can happily take that. We budgeted $830,000 between the general fund and Liquid Fuels Fund.
And this is coming in at 811?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So it's under what was budgeted, and that's always good. And 3.4 out, 3.4 miles.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have questions on this? Seeing none, I'll let me ask, we need to have a, need to have a motion. Is there a motion to, to accept this recommendation?
I was going to say, the motion would be...
Would you want to frame the motion?
I'll frame it.
Yeah. It's in the right order.
If I'm, correct me if I'm overstepping here. The motion would be to authorize the award of the 2022 Liquid Fuels Road Program to Harris Black Topping, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $811,794.50 for the alternates as related by the township engineer, the base bid and the alternates.
Thank you, Mr. Sander. Do we have such a motion?
I will make that motion.
Ms. Snyder will make that motion.
Sorry, jump again.
Would someone like to make a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Mr. Mack, second. Any further comments from the board, questions? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of accepting this recommendation as stated by our solicitor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. Second order of business.
Okay, thank you. Item number two I have here is the Mayfield, this is for me, Arcadia, and they have financial release number one for this project. So the letter for the financial release was also issued on April 6th, and in this release, we verified the items that were presented at the time, and those items for the first release, they totaled in the amount of $188,232.00. And per our review of their submission, we're making a recommendation for the release of these funds. Just to give you a rough breakdown of just some of the items that were captured under this release, a lot of them have to do with erosion and sediment control items such as compost filter socks, the other thing where the septic tanks and utility poles and tree protection, and it's basic things as excavation and fill and about 10 tree removals. So that's the gist of this first payment.
I had a question. This is, this is typical work that's done. It was done, it was, it was done correctly and...
Yes. All the financial securities, the process goes where our staff in the field, they verify that everything that's being submitted is properly done before we make the payment, and if there's any issue, those things are resolved before the payment is actually, I say, drafted for recommendation.
Yep. I did notice in the letter, it says, "Based upon our inspection of the work completed." So, Mr. Sander, you want to frame a motion for that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This would be, if the board is of mind, a motion to approve release number one for Mayfield in the amount of $188,232 at the recommendation of the township engineer.
Do we have such a motion? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Any discussion from the board?
Why they changed their name?
I guess that's, they're not going to call the development Arcadia at Newtown, or even Arcadia, it's going to be called Mayfield.
Mayfield. Well, they're not allowed to use Newtown in their name, so.
Right. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of this motion to pay the financial security release number one, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four, one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Oto.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. That brings us to the solicitors' report. Mr. Sander?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One item in our report this evening is to ask the board for a motion authorizing the drafting and advertisement of an ordinance that would establish a no parking zone on the west side of North Sycamore Street from the center line of Silo Drive to a .120 feet north of Silo Drive, and also to establish a four-way stop intersection at Everett Drive and Lower Dollington Road, and at Yorkshire Drive and Lower Dollington Road.
Okay.
Well, by way of background, the first part of that comes from the board's action in asking the township engineer to recommend safety improvements for the intersection of Sycamore Street and Silo Drive. This is one element of that. It's establishing a no parking zone that, in the township engineer's opinion, will improve site distance at that intersection. The second part of this is, concerns the Lower Dollington Trail and formalizing, I think, a four-way stop intersection at those two intersections.
And I believe that was part of the trail plan as well.
I believe that's correct.
You, those were my two questions, so we're good. Yes, we need to have a motion. If, so the motion would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor, to authorize the drafting and advertisement of the ordinance, of such the ordinance as you described?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
I do have a question. Would this be the two parking spaces we already painted out on that?
I believe that's correct, Mr. Davis, yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
I drove, I drove by there today myself, so.
So we authorize, we do the, eliminate the parking spaces before we have authorization to do so?
Well, the ordinance is necessary in order to be able to enforce the no parking. The striping is an indication, but we will be able to erect signage after the adoption or the enactment of the ordinance that will prohibit parking, and then it will be enforceable by the police.
So there will be signage there?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of this authorization to draft and advertise, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Thank you, Mr. Sander.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
And Ms. McGovern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have the manager's report in front of you today. The fund balance is $4,309,759.18. The plan expiration report requires no action tonight, and we have the chief here to give his monthly report. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, good evening, board members. In March 2022, police report, we documented 1,694 calls for service, logged just over 24,000 patrol miles on our fleet. March was a busy month. We had 30 arrests, 13 for DUI, one for forgery, four for thefts, seven narcotics, one fraud at a bank, and four assaults. There were 21 new cases referred to detectives, which included child line reports, thefts and frauds, terroristic threats, sexual assault, and wire fraud. There were 57 traffic crashes, only one injury. 128 traffic citations were issued, and 187 warnings were issued. There were five overdoses in the township, none fatal, thank God. Parked police vehicle was struck by a fire apparatus responding to the Newtown Borough Job. That's being repaired as we speak. And we assisted Northampton Township in a burglary in progress, and as a result of our involvement, there were two or three offenders arrested. I would like to thank DC 21 Painters and Finishes Union for their voluntary work of supplying dock, items, and painting several interior rooms of the police department at no charge. We had a target enforcement of truck enforcement details, two separate details totaling 25 inspections, 12 citations, 17 warnings. Three vehicles were placed out of service, and one driver was placed out of service, and one truck was towed. Over the month of March, we managed to get three reimbursed traffic enforcement funding back from the county, over $5,000, back to the township for reimbursed traffic enforcement. Just even though it wasn't March, last week, we had a mock assessment for accreditation standards again. We're up again this May. Our mock assessment, we successfully passed that, and we look forward to on-site assessment in May with, I don't see any problems. A couple of public service announcements. Kyle already mentioned the Touch a Truck, April 4th, April 14th, we will be at 11:00 to 2:00 at Veterans Park. We're having a Coffee with a Cop, April 21st, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Jake's on Richbar Road. DA Drug Takeback is April 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in this township building. And we're having a Cars, Cops, and Coffee Show, May 22nd, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at Veterans Park on Dorm Road. Unfortunately, the month of March, in case you guys missed it in the news, we had three line-of-duty deaths for law enforcement officers in the state of Pennsylvania, with two Pennsylvania state troopers killed on March 21st, handling a pedestrian walking on the highway, and on March 31st, a 63-year-old, 40-year veteran of Lebanon Police Department was shot and killed handling the disturbance, domestic disturbance inside a residence. All them funeral details were attended by the Newtown Township Police Department. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have you had the painting done before? It seems like your previous years they've...
They hooked me up a few years back for the old highway garage in the front porch area. They're very generous with their, their time and efforts towards law enforcement and helping us out when we need a little sprucing up.
Fantastic. And I noticed the daily number of incidents is like 57, low mid-50s, and I mean, that's, that struck me as being very busy.
The officers are actually working for a living, and they're putting a lot of miles on their patrol cars, but that's what we pay them to do. But we have to just stay in front of it. We're trying to, we're trying to keep Newtown extremely safe, and unfortunately, that's, it comes with arrests, it comes with some, some battles that we have to field on the, on the field, but we're doing a good job out there for you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
I have a question for the chief. Chief, something that was brought up at Society Place Condo Association meeting in regards to our dumpster areas, and them being used and/or abused by outside residents that don't live in Society Place, and I'm sure this may happen at Crown Point or any other condo association. If a person is, I won't say caught, because I don't want to have anyone get into any kind of confrontation, but if they are known to be outside of the area, and we have their name, address, and so on, can we as an association do something in regards to reporting it and maybe pursuing some sort of action?
Yes, the police department would handle an investigation pertaining to that, and we would cite anybody for illegal dumping. We have to make sure they do not live in the complex and unauthorized or doing work within the complex itself. But it's just like sure, sure dumping on a highway somewhere on public land, this is private property, you guys pay for the trash removals, costs a lot of money. So in order to establish what was being dumped inside in facilities, that's why you have your residents have strict rules about what they're allowed to put in them trash retainers and not. But if they were to contact us, we will enforce it. We would need an eyewitness, and we would need a complainant, which would be the board or a representative of the association.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. I have two further items under the manager's report this evening. If you'll recall, at the previous board meeting in March, the board gave direction to use the American Rescue Plan funds to fund the township's portion of the Lower Dollington Trail. This is the official action memorializing that. So the appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution 2022 R10, which is a budget amendment to transfer $550,000 of American Rescue Plan funds to the Rec Capital Fund for the Lower Dollington Trail project.
Do we have such a motion? I'll make that motion. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of this resolution to shift, how did, how did you say that? It was very good.
To, to transfer $550,000 of American Rescue Plan money.
There you go. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five, nothing.
Thank you. The final item under this report is the authorization to execute an agreement with Comcast for voice-over IP services. If you remember back in the fall, as part of the 2022 budget, this project was contemplated to update our current system to that of voice-over IP. The appropriate motion would be to execute the agreement with Comcast for these services.
Do we have such a motion?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Just by way of a couple of questions, could you fill us in on what, I looked it up to see what it was, and I see that it's Voice Over Internet Protocol.
Yes. Currently, the township implements an analog system, so in order to access that system, you need to be at a physical terminal. Voice-over IP, as long as you have an internet connection, you'll be able to access the phone system. So it not only allows flexibility for those at a, at a remote location, there's cost savings involved with removing Thompson, which is the company that acts as a middleman with our current analog system as well. And I should also mention, the project is expected to come in under budget.
Very good, and this could help for people calling into meetings as well?
Yes, so it will change the current system. Another feature that is included is it will integrate with our existing software, so for example, our phone system will integrate with our email, so you'll actually be able to read your voicemails through an email account.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? I'll call the question. Those in favor of agreeing, approving this agreement with Comcast, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Five, nothing.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We're ready to go to minutes, bills, and other reports, but I think we have minutes and bills tonight. Ms. Snyder?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of March 23rd, 2022.
That comes with a automatic motion, so do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any comments from the board? Any from the public? We'll call the question. Those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Bills?
I'd like to make a motion to pay our bills, a total of $304,113.11. dollars and one cent.
And one cent. That's a motion, do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Mack. Uh, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Thank you, we'll call a question, uh, all those in...
I'm sorry, can you read the, uh, the number again?
Three hundred and four thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and one cent.
I'm sorry, I have three hundred and five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and zero cents, which is...
Yeah, which is correct.
I mean, and they're both dated, they're equal thirteen, too.
Yeah.
What we, what we have in the packet was three oh five, zero six eight, even.
I believe that's the correct number.
Good catch. Good catch, Mr. Clive.
Well, if it was your one cent comment, that's... I guess, I guess if you want to change that number.
What was the number?
Yes, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, pay our bills in the amount of three hundred and five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and zero cents.
Okay, so that's the motion.
I will second again, is that me?
Yes. Thank you, got a motion and a second for three oh five, oh six eight. Um, any... Further discussion from the board? Any from the public? I was having trouble getting my, uh, iPad switched around to see it, but there it is. Uh, a- 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 all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Five, four, one.
For some reason, I still don't see that number.
Wow.
Okay, so...
Interfund transfers.
Right, like to, uh, make a motion to approve our interfund transfers in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
That's the same number I have, I'll, I'll second that. Uh, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Let me call the questions. Those in favor of, um, approving the interfund transfers, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Okay, that brings us to our second round of public comment.
It was a nice night.
I'm Terry Christensen. I live at sixty-seven Kirkwood Drive. I serve on the Township Planning Committee. Um, I, uh, the synopsis, which I noticed different than minutes, it was referred to when, uh, our Planning Committee Chair was here. Um, in the interest of brevity, I suspect, uh, did not capture a lot of the questions that were posed. I have no intention of leveling all the, of rehashing all those questions now, but I think it's important that you get a flavor for what was going on. Uh, I began with a question about a statement in the executive summary that said the level of service will, at the intersection of Lower Chevrolet Lake Road and Highway three twenty-two, the bypass, will degrade to Level D, which, um, uh, according to PennDOT, that's approaching unstable flow, tolerable delay. In fact, a few pages later, that study indicated that it goes to Level E and Level F. So that, that initial statement in the executive summary was, from my perspective, a little misleading. Um, and, uh, and it applied to all three lanes, northbound left, northbound through, northbound right. So it didn't seem that, that adding another lane would address those issues. I raised issues about the waiting of the sampling. Fifty percent of the sampling took place on, uh, on weekends rather than during the week. Um, there, as this back and forth went on, what came, the ultimate answer I got was we did more than the law required, which suggests to me that, um, they weren't interested in being the most informative. And the data is stale. Data does not, it's like dairy products. It doesn't last forever. This was, this was five years old in the case of the crash studies. Um, let me give you one more little synopsis here that, that I found particularly bothersome. This was not my question, it was a question from, uh, a friend of mine. Um, if you look, um, at Table Six, page ten of the PDF, shows an increase of a hundred and twenty-nine new trips on the Sunday church hour. It's based on figures, according there, from Table Five. Table Five is footnoted to say there's no data available for that period. That's a kind of slipshod design of a study that just, I mean, it, it's, it's... I'm, I'm also put off by the fact that they weren't responsive to the Bucks County Planning Commission. But this was a very poorly executed study. I want to be, I want to reassert what I said at the, at the meeting. I am not opposed to Wawa, and I'm certainly not opposed to economic development. I am, however, opposed to any governmental body, including this one, basing a decision on a badly flawed and poorly executed study. The last thing we need to do is generate another traffic quagmire in our Newtown, in this area. I mean, we talk about the quality of life. Unless we're, we have one chance to get this right. Unless we do it right, we're gonna end up looking... We will not maintain, rather than cast aspersions on a neighboring township, I, we will not be, uh, we will not maintain the quality of life that we promised our residents. So thank you for indulging me, and, uh, I'll have more to say when this comes up for, uh, regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen.
Sorry, I have so many things in the way. John DiApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Uh, I was one of the three Newtown residents, uh, other than the supervisors that were there, in the audience for, uh, the Planning Commission meeting. Um, the three people who voted for it, uh, they had even said in their comments, uh, I think, I think it was all three of them, that they felt that Wawa had met the expectations. Now, I know there's, uh, people on the, uh, Planning Commission that, uh, you know, hold the bypass sacred. They don't want to see anything on there. Um, you know, uh, biased opinion or what. I mean, they are on the commission. Uh, they went, uh, they kept on hitting on the Bucks County Planning Commission thing that was, I think, from two thousand sixteen? Don't know about that. Um, you know, most of the people in the audience was, was from Holland, uh, uh, probably riled up from one of the Newtown residents who spoke against it on his, uh, Newtown PA Facebook page. And, uh, those people were there, uh, they're saying, oh, they're, they don't want to see Wawa in Bucks County. And they have a, uh, a problem with Wawa and everything, and I say they're crazy because, I mean, there's a small Wawa across the street from where they want to build theirs, and it's been there forever, a lot longer than I've been up here. Uh, and I only lived probably four miles away from that Wawa, uh, when I lived in Philly. Um, okay, uh, okay, that's, that's it for the Wawa. Oh, the intersection. Uh, I believe the intersection was rated an F for years now, when you talked about, uh, uh, closing the road over by the, uh, the TD Bank. Uh, a few of the residents said they were promised that, uh, that, that road would be closed when McGrath got done, uh, building the, the Villas. Uh, and, uh, that came up, and they talked about that intersection then, and there was another project. It was brought up, that project. That intersection's been bad for a long time. I don't see Wawa making that intersection much worse. I think, uh, just with the people moving in the area and, and the surrounding areas, it's gonna get worse anyway. Um, that, that's, that's fact of life that, uh, you know, uh, more and more traffic has been there. I've been here, uh, twenty-six years next month, and, uh, you know, traffic's got a lot worse now than it was when I first moved here. Okay, uh, also, I, I like to, uh, wish, uh, all residents and everything, a happy Easter and a happy Passover. And if you don't believe in either one of them, be happy anyway. But, um, Ben Salem, Ben Salem, talking about a traffic problem. Ben Salem's Chick-fil-A across from the Shamady Mall, they voted to, uh, the township voted to expand their Chick-fil-A, uh, their kitchen, just like they want to do here in Newtown, change the takeout lanes and all that stuff. They approved it. You guys shot ours down, and we still gotta live with it. Um, you know, you see all those signs and everything. Ben Salem means business. What are we gonna do? Newtown doesn't? Fire Company, did you make a, a, a contract with them yet? Is that coming up later? I mean, months gone by, months go by, it's month number four now. Yeah, okay. See what else I have here? You've got the, uh, the, uh, the plastic and everything. I mean, very nice presentation, but, uh, you know, it's only a few, it seems like a few years ago, uh, New York City was still dumping their trash in the ocean. And, uh, you know, the poor fish and, and sea life and all that stuff, I mean, they got special exemption. They were dumping their trash in the ocean, and, you know, it seems like we could do every, everything possible, and it's still gonna have an impact on the world because a lot of the foreign countries dump. Uh, cruise ships used to dump over the side, you know, when they do the cruises. Uh, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I, I, moving on to old business, I do have one-ish, one, um, topic for conversation, and that is the appointment of Mark Haber, if I'm saying it right, or Haber, uh, for the EAC. Uh, the, his brief resume bio was in, in the packet. I hope everybody had a chance to look at it. It looked good to me. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to, uh, appoint Mark to the EAC?
I'd make that motion.
Was, is there a second? Ms. Snyder makes the motion, I'll make a sec, I'll, I'll, I'll make the second. Uh, any conversation about that? Nope. Uh, any from the public? Uh, not, if not, we'll call a question for Mark Haber's appointment to the EAC. Say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five, nothing. I have two very brief reports, uh, about, of old business, and the one is the, uh, fire services agreement. Uh, we are, uh, we have a fire services agreement. The, after some vacations last month, uh, the Borough got back to us. We met last week. Uh, they made some clarification changes. Didn't change any of the numbers. It just changed, uh, some, some wording as to how it was described. So what I will do, uh, haven't had a chance to do that since I received it over the weekend. I was gonna highlight some of those changes and the reasons why, send an email, uh, to, uh, the board to look it over. So, uh, my, my thought was that we could discuss it at the, put it on the agenda, we could discuss it at the April twenty-seventh meeting. And then, uh, after, we can decide who, who approves it first or, or if it, if it, if it's going that way for approval. Uh, the, the Borough meets in early May. Uh, that's their next time that they would like to, uh, present it to the, the full council and the, the members, the residents of the Borough. So I was thinking, uh, depending on the timing, our April, our May eleventh or twelfth meeting, we might be able to put this to bed, so to speak. I'll have to find my calendar.
Oh, while that's being looked up, I guess the question for the solicitor is, uh, do we have to vote to advertise anything in regards to this, or did we already do that? Uh, it's been so long, I, I've forgotten.
Remind me what the previous discussions were.
In regards to the, uh, fire agreement contract with the Borough?
No.
Okay.
We will have to adopt a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement, but that does not have to be advertised.
Okay.
But it will have to appear on a board agenda for action.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sure.
That was my understanding, too. Uh, thank you. Any, any other questions about that? No one wants this to be done any more quickly than I. It's been a long time. Uh, then the other, um, just very brief agenda item, I, I know that the staff has looked at the committee revisions, the, the, you know, for the ordinances that, that created the, the committees. And, and I believe, uh, Mr. Sanders, do you, do you have, uh, anything from the staff about the, the committees and the resolutions?
Yes.
And all the, there, there is some confusion because there's multiple resolutions about, resolutions or ordinances.
That, that's correct. Uh, in fact, uh, Ms. McGovern has sent me over a summary of all the existing ordinances and the terms, and, uh, I am going through that and trying to sort it out. So it's a work in progress, Mr. Chairman.
And I just wanted to report that there is progress.
Absolutely.
It's behind the scenes.
Yep.
All right. Any other old business? Any new business?
Yeah, I just have a statement. Uh, uh, Central Bucks School District is prohibiting their theatrical department for performing a Pulitzer Prize-winning play called Rent. And, uh, some supervisors all over Bucks County are, since we have a, a little bit of a voice, we're gonna try to put something together that we can all agree on, saying that we are against censorship in all forms, including in our theaters. And, uh, hopefully, maybe some supervisors here will be, will want to add their names to that. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any other new business?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just, um, just like to bring up a topic, maybe, I don't know, a topic for a discussion or maybe not discussion. But, but a- as we know and as mentioned tonight, we all make, uh, motions and vote on things up here. And, and I'm just wondering if, uh, by some sort of, uh, parliamentarian, uh, ruling that when a supervisor votes no or abstains, if that supervisor would give a reason as to why? I, I know for abstentions, there's supposed to be a reason given, either conflict of interest or something like that. But, but, I mean, we've had some votes up here where we voted no to, uh, not issue a license, liquor license to a business, but, but it was never really, uh, expanded upon as to why the supervisors voted no. And I, I'm just wondering if this is some sort of, uh, procedure we could enforce going forward, because we all know why we vote yes, of course, is because we, we want to see that motion passed. But when there's a no vote, maybe there's a valid reason as to why the supervisor's voting no, and the other supervisors would like to hear that. Not, not holding any judgment, uh, in, in any way, but just that I think that if someone votes no, they should have an, they should have an appropriate reason as to why they're voting no.
Anybody else want to comment on that? Or maybe I get a, an opinion from the solicitor? Is, is that something that's commonly done or?
That is not commonly done, that's an interesting, uh, proposition, but I, I have not seen that done in any of, any of our other municipal, uh, clients. I, I do agree with Mr. Calabro that when somebody abstains, the Robert's Rules do, uh, require the giving of, of a reason, again, conflict of interest or, uh, I was absent from that, uh, meeting. But there's nothing in there that requires, uh, the explanation of a no vote. So, um, the board, under the second-class township code, can make its own policies for, uh, the operation and running of its meetings. If it wanted to adopt a policy that required that, uh, if a majority of the board were of a mind, I would think that that would be something you could do, um, but I have not seen that before, no.
Yeah, I know that I, I generally have an idea whether, which way I'm voting and why and, uh, but maybe we can discuss that some more informally and formally if we want to, but, um, all right. Thank, thank you for bringing that, bringing that up, Mr. Calabro. Any other? Looks like we're ready to adjourn without, uh, without objection. I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.